Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Mr. Armstrong will not be with us because he is ill, and Mrs. Morgan, I think, is on the phone. Mrs. Morgan, are you with us?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening and welcome. Are you in China?
I am. I'm in Beijing.
Wow. Well, thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening. We appreciate that.
Is it a few schools over there?
Yes, they do.
This school board meeting of September 24, 2013, is now called to order. The time is 6:00 p.m. At this time, we request that you turn off your cellphones or put them into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you refrain from flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance; one recognition, two resolutions; public comment; consent-action items, which include three under executive services; thirteen items under business and finance; one item under operations; six items under teaching and learning; two items for public hearing; and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Seconded by Mr. Scott.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. This evening, Mrs. Dozier will deliver the invocation, after which Mr. Scott will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Please bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening at this Lee County School Board meeting. Please bless each person that is present and here in the auditorium, as well as all of those that are at home. We ask that you put your guiding hand and your protective hand on all of our troops that are in harm's way this evening and around the world. We also ask that you guide Dr. Graham, the superintendent, as she brings forth all of her recommendations tonight. We ask that you also guide us during all of our discussions and give us the wisdom that we might make the correct decisions and the decisions that are in the best interest of all of the children that we serve. We pray that this meeting will be successful, productive, and blessed. We give you the glory for what we will accomplish this evening. In your name, amen.
At this time, please welcome Sergeant Major Levi Bennett, Army instructor of the JROTC program at Cypress Lake High School, who will introduce the cadet presenting the colors. Sergeant Major Bennett served 24 years in the U.S. Army, mainly in Army units in Germany, Egypt, Korea, Kuwait, Iraq, and numerous stateside Army bases. Sergeant Major Bennett also served as an Army recruiter and a drill sergeant during his military career. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in human resource management from Excelsior College and is -- waiting for the page to turn -- one course short of completing his master's degree in public administration from Norwich University. He is in his second year of serving the school district. Sergeant Major.
Thank you. Presenting the colors tonight is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Cameron Saffold. Cadet Saffold has distinguished himself in academic, school, and JROTC activities throughout his high school years. Cadet Saffold is ranked number 58 out of 332 graduating seniors at Cypress Lake High School with a GPA of 3.94. Additionally, he is a member of the National Honor Society. Among his many achievements in the JROTC program, Cadet Saffold is the Cadet Battalion Commander of the Panther JROTC Battalion. He is a member of the marksmanship and drill teams. Following graduation, Cadet Saffold plans to attend the University of South Florida on an Air Force ROTC college scholarship valued at $82,000.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. To Mr. Dale Howchin, Ms. Kathy Padella, Dr. Jeff Spiro, and Dr. Pete Bohatch to please join me here at the lectern. The school district of Lee County is proud to announce that the North Fort Myers High School is the recipient of the Fred E. Rosell Scholarship Award. The awards honor schools whose athletic teams demonstrated model sportsmanship during the 2012-2013 regular season and the FHSAA State Series. Twenty high schools and three middle schools were the recipients of the respected and prestigious award this year, with North Fort Myers High School winning the award for the Class 5A. In recognition of their achievement, the students and staff members of North Fort Myers High School were presented with a check for $3,000 and a commemorative plaque at their first pep rally. The district is proud to recognize North Fort Myers High School for their commitment to promoting the positive Red Knight spirit in all of their endeavors. I would like to present this to the principal. And I would like to ask you, would you like to say something?
Just a second.
Okay.
And Mr. Spiro. This is just an example of the outstanding student athletes that we have at North Fort Myers, and also the outstanding academic kids that we have there, too. So I'm very proud of them. Also, Mr. Spiro, Dr. Spiro, was the principal last year, so I think he should come forward and say a little something here.
Just wanted to say thank you very much. As Principal Howchin said, this truly is a great representation of not only the sportsmanship at North Fort Myers High School, but truly what we see each and every day as the teams field-sport in various areas. So we want to say thank you very much.
Yeah, go up here and get your pictures, ma'am. Put that check out in front so everybody can see how much it was for. Go Red Knights! I would like to invite Mr. Mike Burston, Director of the Exceptional Student Education, and Ms. Rachel Taylor, Program Specialist for Inclusion, and Ms. Donna Jurth, Family Liaison, to please join me here at the lectern. In 2008, the Florida Legislature created a statute designating the first two weeks of October each year as Disability History and Awareness Weeks. During these two weeks, school districts across the state may provide students with intensive instruction to expand their knowledge, understanding, and awareness of individuals with disabilities and the history of the disability rights movement. The expected outcome of this instruction will result in a better treatment of individuals with disabilities and increased attention to preventing bullying or harassment of students with disabilities; provide encouragement to individuals with disabilities to develop an increased self-esteem resulting in their desire to obtain post-secondary education, enter the workforce, and continue to their communities, and reaffirm the commitment to the inclusion of equal opportunity for all individuals with disabilities. Madam Chairman, I move for adoption the resolution proclaiming October 1st through the 15th as Disability History and Awareness Week. Do you have a motion on the floor? Yes. For members, we have the motion proclaiming October 1st through the 15th as Disability History and Awareness Week. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second amendment, Mr. Scott. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. I would like to ask you, if you'd like to say a few words about this.
Certainly. I did not realize that the first presentation was going to get a large check, so I would like to officially request that we be first next year. In regards to Disability History and Awareness Weeks, just some recent events that are related to this resolution. Last week, our district's Autism Roundtable Committee met. This is a group of community program and agency representatives, parents, and district staff who are dedicated to the education and betterment of students with autism spectrum disorders and their families. In addition, this school -- the school district's ESE Advisory Committee will meet this week. This is a group of very supportive parents who work with school and district staff to achieve all that is detailed in this resolution today. ESE department continues to support people-first language and to change how we think, talk, and write about students and adults with disabilities, thus moving forward to address tonight's resolution. Last week, I attended a workshop in St. Petersburg presented by a nationally-recognized IDEA attorney. She stated that "the actual disability label should not matter; its eligibility for services and the provision of a free, appropriate public education that matters." This is a message we've supported for years: Special education is a service and not a place. This afternoon, I just asked a few people, kind of giving me some examples of what was going on around the district. Ida Baker High School continues to create and sustain a culture inclusion of all students via their Baker Buddies program. District Assistant Principals recently attended a wonderful presentation on their very successful program. Many schools, including Pelican, Pine Island, Lee High Elementary, have already scheduled sensitivity training. The Kids Night Out program at Trafalgar Middle School, ESE pre-K and Head Start programs that are increasing inclusive opportunities. Lee High Senior High School with a great program building self-confidence and pride. Manti Elementary with effective collaboration. These are just a handful, and now I've got all the schools that I didn't mention upset with me, but we've just got a lot of good things that are going on in our district. These examples show that we can break free from some of our thoughts and actions that place students with disabilities in silos. It is not those kids are your kids. Students with disabilities are our kids, included in the group that comprises all of the students in our great school district. I want to thank the board members, Superintendent Graham, teachers, parents, helping teachers, paraprofessionals, school and district support staff and administrators, bus drivers and aides, but most importantly, I want to thank the individuals with disabilities for whom this resolution recognizes and supports. And I also want to thank very, very much the two people that are behind me. Donna Jurth is our ESE parent liaison, and Rachel Taylor is our ESE inclusion specialist. They are a very small but powerful army in regards to being focused on disability awareness and inclusion in this district, so don't mess with them.
Did you hear that?
I did. Thank you. You guys got that? Thank you. I'd like to invite Dr. Pete Bohatch, Ms. Lori Brooks, and Ms. April Thompson to join me here at the lectern. Dr. Bohatch is Director of Student Services. Ms. Brooks is the Coordinator for School Counseling Services, and Ms. Thompson is a Prevention Specialist for Student Services. Childhood bullying is a significant problem nationwide. It can cause school absenteeism, poor academic performance, mental and physical stress, loss of self-esteem, increased anxiety, and depression. Young people say that bullying is one of the biggest problems they face. In fact, 52% of students report seeing bullying at least once a week. This negatively affects the victims, the bullies, and those who witness bullying, as well as the student environment as a whole. The entire month of October has been set aside to raise awareness of this problem and to encourage communities to work together to reduce the impact of bullying on all children, including those with disabilities. It's been shown that when adults and children unite to reduce bullying, communities will see safer school environments with students achieving at their highest potential. Madam Chairman, in an effort to raise awareness of and reduce the impact of bullying on the children of our community, I move for adoption of the resolution proclaiming October 2013 as National Bullying Prevention Month.
For members, we have a motion on October 2013 as National Bullying Prevention Month. Do I hear a second? Second? Second amendment, Mrs. Dozier. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to do this, Lori?
Sure. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Board members, and Dr. Graham, thank you for recognizing the genuine challenge our
students face with bullying every day. It's important to have prevention in our schools, and Dr. Bohatch and also April Thompson are champions of that cause. So while I'm here representing Student Services, I'd like to thank them personally for their passion and their dedication to all areas of prevention and Student Services. In honor of National Bully Prevention Month, it's important for each of us to pause and reflect on our own behavior, because while we also work with our children, we need to examine our own behavior, especially in regards to bullying. At some point in our lives, each of us has been a target, a bystander, and yes, we have likely even bullied others at times, however unintentionally. We may not even realize we've done so. Thank you for your commitment to bully prevention in our schools. We want to keep our students safe and healthy, and your commitment helps us to do that, and for your support and your supporting the mission of educators to train -- it's a word wrapper -- children's hearts while we educate their minds, because both of them are so interconnected. So thank you very much.
Quick commercial here. I'd like to thank Sunco Schools Federal Credit Union for funding -- April, step up here
for a second. All right. The credit union funded the prevention specialist position for two years. So every time you use your debit card, a portion of that goes to the foundation. So keep using your debit card. Continue to spend, spend, spend. But no, thank you to the credit union and appreciate all your help. Go.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, will you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker wishes to address the school board to endorse the purchase of a product or a service in which a speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. Ms. Fisher, I have one card this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not complete a card and wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Okay, Mr. Schaefer, and can you state your name, ma'am?
Lori.
Thank you. Okay. Please call the first card. Mr. Martin?
First speaker is Ms. Denise Purcell.
My name is Denise Purcell. I am a parent of an intensive academic student at the Alva School in eighth grade. Previously, the Alva School had eight periods of class time, but this year, the school reduced it to seven periods of class time. I was told at the open house by the teachers this was a decision made by the principal because over 52% of the students at the Alva School were below grade level in their reading. The principal wanted to extend the basic classes to incorporate more reading time. A direct result of this decision is that my child, as well as all ESE students who have intensive classes, are now denied any elective class. There is no social break other than lunch, and there is no inclusive peer modeling as well. My child does not get to interact with other general education peers in physical education, art, nor any other medium. This is in violation of most ESE students' IEPs. I find this structure to be discriminatory to my child, as well as other ESE students. Without a break in their schedule, there is an increased likelihood of behavioral issues which can result in referrals as well as decreased class performance. These students will ultimately be excluded from any outside activities such as intramural sports and field trips because of low grades and referrals. I do not understand why there cannot be eight-period classes which will enable ESE students to receive an elective class. The general education students who are behind in their grade-level reading should be required to take an intensive reading class, just like the ESE students are mandated to take. This existing policy is unfair and needs to be changed to provide equal treatment to all students who attend the Alva School. I have previously spoken with Mrs. Winfrey, the Assistant Principal at Alva School, Helen Uritan, the Alva Staffing Specialist, Shelley Taylor, the ESE Coordinator for East Zone, and Donna Jurth, the Family Liaison for ESE Families. The only advice was to change schools if I was unhappy. I do not find this a viable solution when you have an ESE student who has attended the same school for two years and is expecting to graduate eighth grade with her friends and classmates. To place my child in another school where solid friendships have already been formed in that school, to have to reorient herself to new teachers and classes is simply not realistic to meeting my child's needs. I am therefore requesting your intervention to correct what I believe is a misjustice that is being experienced by all ESE students at the Alva School. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Board members, I had not planned on speaking tonight, but after hearing your two resolutions and Mr. Scott's remarks at the last meeting about dyslexia, I am dyslectic. I didn't find out until I was 28 years old. So for the first 28 years of my life, I lived in a vacuum because people did not understand the problem I had. It was not addressed. I was pushed to the back of the classroom. You heard a parent now who just talked about their child and the suffering that they are facing. This is a form of bullying. You may not realize it, but it is a form of bullying that adults perpetrate on children with disabilities. I'm glad that you are taking the initiative to look at it, but we need to be more cognizant of these problems. There are many forms of dyslectic people. Mine happens to be spelling and reversing words, and I still have problems today with it. But I've overcome a lot of it through training by one person who took the initiative to sit down and work with me. We need to look at these children. They're not -- they're just like everybody else, but they have a minor problem. I call it a blessing, because without that blessing, I wouldn't be cognizant of other children today. We need to watch these children and learn from them and help these children survive and cope with the world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lori, will you come forward?
I'm concerned about how the students will pass the FCAT this spring when they're being taught and tested on our new Go Math Common Core books, and also what the implications will be for how the results are going to affect them next year, the following school year, as well as the schools and the teachers, since the tests are such high stakes.
Thank you.
I do have some of the Go Math papers in case you haven't seen those.
Thank you. Lori, can you please state your last name?
Yes, it's Fahey.
Fahey.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you for your comments. Dr. Graham, can you have someone talk again with Mrs. Purcell and see if there is any other resolution to the issue with her daughter?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for your comments. And this afternoon, we had a workshop on Common Core, and we focused strictly on the standards and skill sets, and so we're anticipating more conversation regarding assessment because we've had recent changes from the governor. Did you want to comment on that at all, or on the testing and assessment?
I was just going to -- I was going to just encourage Mrs. Fahey if she would connect with Mrs. Coates, who's here. They could talk before she left tonight, and that might give her -- Kristy, could you just wave, and they could have a conversation? She could share the specifics, because I know she knows a whole lot more about Go Math than I do. But she can share. I know she understands the concern, because we've had several conversations, so.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm sure that Mrs. Coates will address your concerns, and thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of action items. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table portion of the agenda? Mrs. Dozier?
I have none this evening. Thank you.
Mrs. Morgan?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I have two that I just want to make a quick comment on. C1, which is --
[inaudible]
I was just going to -- I was going to just encourage Mrs. Fahey if she would connect
with Mrs. Coates, who's here. They could talk before she left tonight, and that might give her -- Kristy, could you just wave, and they could have a conversation? She could share the specifics, because I know she knows a whole lot more about Go Math than I do. But she can share. I know she understands the concern, because we've had several conversations, so.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm sure that Mrs. Coates will address your concerns, and thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of action items.
C1, which is on page 47.
C1, page 47.
D1, which is on page 77.
Page 77, okay. And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items with the exception of the pulled items?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, four zero. Okay, we have two pulls to address. Okay, is there a motion for?
We need a recommendation first, Ms. Fisher. Superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Graham, would you please state your recommendation for item C1, page 47?
Approval of the general personnel recommendations, including administrative certificated support and substitute staff out of field appointments, annual reappointments, and corrections to items previously approved by the board.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Mr. Scott?
I pulled this one simply to reinforce conversation that I've had with both Dr. Graham and Dr. Atkins very recently. I'm concerned when I look through the changes at the reasons for people leaving the district, personal reasons. I think we have to dig deeper, and that was the gist of the conversation. What are we doing in terms of exit interviews? And I know Dr. Atkins has some pretty strong thoughts about what we ought to do on that, and I believe Dr. Graham shares those, and I'm encouraging them to step forward, and let's put something together that allows us to get to the real reasons why. I believe there were 710 positions vacated.
Last year.
In the last year, and that over half of those were in those two categories that we really need to dig deeper on and find out what the reasons are. So I just pulled this to make that statement and encourage them to move forward on that process.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Thank you.
I just sent, just a tag to that. I just sent all of you just before I walked in here, the data about those 710 and the reasons they left and what our plan is to resurrect the exit interview process that was being developed several years ago and got stopped. So it's coming, but you can read the line of conversation we've had about that and see what the reasons were for those 710 departures.
Thank you very much, Dr. Graham. And now, will you please give your recommendation for item D1 on page 77?
Approval of the agreement articulated acceleration plan with the Board of Trustees of Edison State College to enhance learning opportunities for eligible students with the opportunity to take specified college-level courses in lieu of standard curricular courses at an estimated annual cost of $2,400,000 and authorization for the superintendent to execute related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier and seconded by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Mr. Scott?
Again, this is one I pulled just for edification of everybody. This is a $2 million increase in expenditures this year over what we had allocated last year as a result of action taken by the state legislature requiring us to participate in this way. It's just another indication of somebody else spending local taxpayer money. I think there are ways to work through and around this to some extent, but it's on the books, and it is going to cost this district upwards of $2 million in order to comply with the statute that was put into place for this. So I just call it out as another, somebody reached into our goodie bag and pulled out some money for them to spend.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, four zero. We have no superintendent or board attorney recommendations, and the next item on the agenda is public hearing. Dr. Graham, will you present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing items?
Approval of revisions to Policy 1.09 board meetings to comply with Senate Bill 50 by revising the public comment portion of the policy. The effective date of the revisions to Policy 1.09 board meetings will be Tuesday, October 1, 2013. Second recommendation, approval of the tentative District Facilities Work Program 2013-14 through 2032-33.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. We will now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider (a) revisions to Policy 1.09 board meetings and (b) tentative facilities work program 2013-2014 through 2032-2033. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these two items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone in the right side of the auditorium who would like to speak? Anyone on the left side? Okay, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of September 24, 2013. Dr. Graham, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearings.
Approval of revisions to Policy 1.09 board meetings to comply with Senate Bill 50 by revising the public comment portion of the policy. The effective date of the revisions to Policy 1.09 board meetings will be Tuesday, October 1, 2013.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, seconded by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, the legislature always, at the end of every session, gives us examples of things that they want us to look into, change, and so forth. However, part of this motion is something that some of us had been discussing for quite some time. Let me just read the addition for those of you that don't have the language out there. If a motion made by a board member and seconded to take action not in response to a recommendation of the superintendent or board attorney, an opportunity will be provided for individuals to comment on the subject of the motion alone after discussion of the motion by the school board and before the vote is taken. This opportunity will not be required if the matter addressed in the motion was, will be placed on a subsequent agenda before the final action is taken. You know, there have been on a couple of occasions when motions were made at the table, they were seconded, they were voted on, and the public didn't have an opportunity to say anything. Mr. Martin and I have had multiple conversations around this particular issue, and I do feel like that it's very important for the public to always be able to weigh in on any issue that comes before us. And this amendment, our addendum to the policy, will actually provide that opportunity for members of the public, so I will certainly be wholeheartedly supporting this this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, four zero. Dr. Graham, your second recommendation?
Approval of the tentative District Facilities Work Program 2013-2014 through 2032-2033.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Mr. Scott?
This is capital money, and I think we had a discussion last time about the jeopardy we face when it comes to capital spending. The revenues are not there because certain of our mechanisms for collecting it have been removed, and the only thing we really have to collect any sort of capital money now is the levy we make against real estate owners within the county. So it is a big problem. We had a significant conversation about it the last finance committee meeting, and they're taking it as a challenge to look at various ways we might go about dealing with that. But it's not going to go away in a hurry, and this facilities plan, no matter what's in there, can only go as far as the available dollars, and we just, we just don't have them. So I know Dr. Graham and staff will do the best they can with what they have, but at some point in the not-too-distant future, it runs out of gas.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other comment? Okay, thank you. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, four zero. Next on the agenda is other business, beginning with board members' comments and reports. Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to address a couple of the speakers that spoke this evening. Ms. Purcell, I certainly can understand, I believe I understood you to say that, let's see, I believe I understood you to say that you didn't know about this until the open house. Could you just nod if that's correct? My question to you, Dr. Graham, would be, what communication went out to the parents? I mean, this is a huge decision, and if this decision was made in a silo and then all of a sudden it was put down by the school, I think the parents really should have been able to weigh in and let their, you know, we let the parents weigh in on dress code, for goodness sakes. You know, this is, to me, this issue is so much bigger than dress code, and, you know, if we give them the opportunity to weigh in there, and we're not giving them the opportunity to weigh in on the academics of their students, shame on us. So I would prefer, or ask you, and if other board members support, if you will check into exactly how this came down and get back with us and give us a report on it, because I'm not sure that, maybe that was a decision of somebody that was thinking, didn't think past what they needed to think past, maybe an unseasoned principle.
Now, I'm unable to answer the question directly, but I can say that the Alva School went through a major transition this summer, becoming the Alva School, and I'm sure several things took place. But I am going to ask that Mrs. Valaris and Mr. Burston have a conversation with Ms. Purcell before she leaves so that we can get her exact answers, and I will also look into what communications were sent out before school started. So Jean Anna and Mike, if you could, Ms. Purcell, if you could look at the hand, those two are going to meet with you before you go. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, thank you for always speaking so passionately about the issues that concern you, the issues that affect you, and the issues that you are interested in. I know that one of the things that I'm going to talk about in just a minute is something that actually assists with bullying, and it's free. And anytime I can hear something or find out something that's free, and it's got the, it's got the label of, the good seal of approval, if you will, that this has, I think everybody's going to be kind of impressed with this. This afternoon, when we had, Ms. Fahey, when we had the conversation around Common Core, there was a lot of discussion this afternoon. There was a lot of angst, not only at the school level with students and parents, but I think the teachers have the angst. I think that we, as board members, have the angst. I think that's one of the reasons why the governor did what he did yesterday and pulled back on things and said, "Let's slow this process down," because it was, it was moving like a freight train out of control, and he saw that and recognized that it could be detrimental, and we needed to look into it a little bit. So I'm sure that Dr. Graham will have someone address your concerns this evening, and hopefully we can address that with the students, because you just raised an issue that I hadn't even thought of. And, I mean, definitely, you know, that could really hurt our kids, so we need to consider that. The next thing that I have, board members, I know Mr. Scott met with this individual, so I don't have a packet for you because I think he gave you a packet. Mr. Matthews, have you, you've already met with him, correct? All right, I'm going to give each one of you a packet, and I'm going to pass these over to the secretary and ask if she will please give these to the other two board members. And I, he didn't leave me an extra packet or any extra packets. I think he said he met with you and gave you a packet.
He gave it to us.
Okay, all right. I did have a conversation with him, and the conversation was around the SIS providers, and I have personally asked Dr. Graham and if they would use the data to look at the summary of what his report is, so that we can, he's giving us some data, this is his data. We need to look at our data and compare the two, I think, and that was what I told him when I met with him, that I felt like, you know, he had some grave concerns, and he had some issues that, if in fact his issues are correct, I think it's something that we need to address, we need to look at, but we need to have the correct and absolute data. So I've asked Dr. Graham if she would look into that and give us a report back, if that's something that y'all would wish to have as well. Something very exciting, you know, I brought the Jason Project back several years ago. This is a project called Common Sense, and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If you would take one, pass it down, and I think there's enough for, this is a Common Sense Media Education Program, and I want to give you a little background about it. What we do, and it's, I'm not part of the "we," but I'm reading to you what they do. They rate and review. You know, when you see movies that are rated, when you see games that are rated, when you see different things that are rated, try to get the review from Common Sense, because Common Sense has sponsors such as Time Warner, Comcast, Netflix, Amazon, and they are reaching more than 1 million homes, and they want to be sure that they are giving the parents the absolute best rating that they can. And to me, I found it very impressive, and I had the opportunity to look through some of, you say, "What's free?" Well, yeah, that rating is free, but that's not the important thing that's free. They also serve to educate highly. They provide high-quality digital literacy and citizenship resources. We are always saying that we want our children to be good citizens, and we want to have citizenship content for our students. That is something that is provided, and it's free content. Teacher reviews of digital content to help ease discovery. They have 58,000 registered schools across the United States, 100,000 educators are already registered. Now, I want to read to you what their mission is. "We are dedicated to improving the lives of kids and families by providing the trustworthy information, education, and independent voice that they need to thrive in a world of media technology." Our vision, and I thought of my fellow board members when I read their vision, and I really got a chuckle and a smile, and I had to share it with Dr. Graham, too, because I said, you know, now, I like that vision. I like that mission. But it's, we envision a world in which every kid knows how to make safe, responsible, and respectful choices to harness the learning potential of digital media in a 24/7 connected world. Now, that sounds like a real lofty type of vision, but I can understand it, and I absolutely can see what that looks like, and just like I could see what our vision looked like, that will be a world-class school system one day. When they educate, they have media materials for learning and for life. I'm not going to do a lengthy presentation, but I'm going to give this information. I want to thank you for allowing Ms. Kootz to come and meet with the two individuals that came. And the gentleman that brought this and brought the lady to me, they never bring me anything unless it's good stuff, and this is absolute good stuff, and I certainly hope that we will find a way to offer it or let our teachers know that it is available. They have, they have developed a partnership with Howard Gardner at Harvard Graduate School of Education. This high-quality K-12 curriculum empowers students to think critically, behave safely, and participate responsibly in our digital world. And, you know, one of the things about all of us as individuals and adults, this is something that we are learning. We are learning about the digital world, and we learn more about the digital world every day. We have kids now that that's their world, and it's always been their world. They're not learning about the world, it's just there, and yes, they're learning it, but they're not even thinking about learning it. So I think to have a group that is supported by so many of these powerful, if you will, respected individuals that are behind this, and they have also all kinds of information for teachers, for students, for parents, they tell you how to go about having a parent night, to let the parents know how to look at social media, look at all the digital world out there, and how to address it with their children, what communication, what language to use with their children. I just think that this is absolutely, it's something that we just can't do without. So I, I'm glad that Mr. Glover and Ms. Sullivan came and asked me for some of my time, and that I gave it to them, because when they offered this to us, I just got so excited. I think I was screaming, and the building was shaking. So I certainly hope that that's something that we're going to get out to all of our teachers, and after all of you have the opportunity to read through the pamphlet that I gave you, I would ask that you kind of... you, I would ask that you kind of weigh in with the superintendent as well. The next thing that I feel as though I have to do is, I have to make some kind of a statement regarding the report, or the summary report that we just received last week. I was out of town, and I received a total of 14 media inquiries, and I didn't answer any of them. And I, I've had an opportunity to think about the summary, I've had an opportunity to kind of ponder it, and I went from a seven-page report that I was going to read tonight to about a two-and-a-half-page report, and, or not report, but a response, if you will. "During the last two years, we have watched this school district as it was placed in constant turmoil, and our dedicated employees were forced to suffer through bullying, harassment, and often hostile working conditions. This board sat here making comments such as, 'This will not affect the schools, they are doing their jobs,' and yet we know that these conditions did in fact have a tremendous impact on this school district. And the way that you can measure that, it did in fact have a effect on this school district, is that we went from an A school district to a C under the leadership of Dr. Burke and the two individuals that he brought to the county with him. We had three opportunities to stop the stupidity, and yet as a board, we voted to let the upheaval and the madness continue. Comments were made by some board members that we did not want to spend district money. Let the state foot the bill if they want to investigate. In the long run, the money spent was in part from the taxpayers here in Lee County, because as a portion of our tax dollars from here in Lee County, we fund state agencies such as the Department of Education and the IG's office. When Dr. Burke left Lee County, he said he was retiring, he had health issues, and yet he is now seeking other employment here in Florida. He is looking into becoming another superintendent or another school administrator in the other districts around the state. We know that he was running from what he knew the findings would be from the inspector general. I knew at the time, in fact, I even told him I felt that he was running from the issue. In fact, this is what he did in two other school districts, he ran from issues. It is really a disgrace that our employees had to suffer through this period of mayhem. The IG investigative report resulted in finding that Dr. Burke did in fact suspend an active Lee County Professional Standards investigation concerning Dr. Deidre Hicks. If Dr. Burke were still an employee in the Lee County School, with the Lee County School Board, this finding could provide a basis to consider termination of Dr. Burke's employment contract with the Lee County School Board. Florida statute provides that if the district school superintendent has knowledge of a legally sufficient complaint against an employee holding a professional certificate and fails to report that complaint to the Department of Education, the school superintendent is subject to a potentially penalty of forfeiture of up to one-year salary from the date of such failure to act. Though the IG doesn't specifically make a finding with respect to failure to report such a legally sufficient complaint to the Department of Education, it appears that such failure may have occurred in this matter with respect to the complaint against Dr. Hicks. If Dr. Burke were still an employee of the board, the school board may be able to withhold his salary for one year, a one-year time period, if it could substantiate that the failure to report the legally sufficient complaint to DOE occurred. If the school board wished to pursue such a matter, further investigation would be needed to substantiate the failure to report in violation of the statute. The report also finds that Dr. Burke transferred approximately $1.6 million in grant funds from their designated accounts without board approval, and without submitting changes to the project application to the Department of Education for approval. This violation of school board policy and the Department of Education processes could also serve as a basis for disciplining Dr. Burke, were he still an employee of the Lee County School Board. All right, let's now look at where we are in regards to this situation and his lack of leadership in his hiring practices. We now have two EEOC complaints against us, one from Dr. Deidre Hicks and the other from Dr. Alberto Rodriguez. And the information that I'm getting ready to speak from is public information, anybody can go and request this information. In the claim from Dr. Hicks, in the EEOC claim, she claimed that she was discriminated against, and yet let's look at the facts. She was hired on July 27, 2011, at a salary of $105,306. Not even six months later, on November 9, 2011, she was given a pay rate change from step 15 to step 18, with a salary increase to $108,406.80. Then in June of 2012, her position was changed to Executive Director of Improvement and Operations, and her salary was raised to $115,771.20, not even a year since she had been employed, and yet she went from 105 to 115. I'm sure that all of our employees would like that kind of treatment, if that's discrimination and what discrimination is. I know that I would like that kind of treatment. Dr. Hicks also received a $5,000 supplement, and I'm going to tell you right now, there are people sitting out in this audience right now that have been given extra duties, they've never been compensated a penny for it, and some of those duties were absolutely huge. She was given the duties of the turnaround specialist for Lee County, and she was given $5,000, and it was spread out over paychecks during the 2013 school year. In the past year, employees have been given extra duties in this district, and there was no compensation for it. And one example that came to my mind as I was writing this was, several years ago, when we became an A-rated district, that there was a person that was placed in charge of the district accreditation, that person was not compensated in any way, and I can tell you, because I used to serve on the Saks-Cassie Committee, that this is an arduous process, and it's not an easy task, it's, you've got to be organized, you've got to be on top of things, and the first time that you get accredited, it's absolutely unbelievable, the organization, the workload, the paperwork, and everything that you have to do. And yet, that person that received that task was never compensated, and it would have been, I think, equal to some of the compensations that she and the other gentleman received while they were here. Dr. Hicks' final paycheck included money for sick leave that was transferred for Orange County, from Orange County, let's look at that. The sick leave that was transferred on 10/1, or October 1, 2011, was 73.63 hours. However, per our own board policy, the allowable amount that she should have been able to bring into the district was only 24 hours, and yet she was able to bring in 73.63 hours. Also, sick leave was transferred on 12/22/12, December 22, 2012, she received 75.63 hours. However, again, we have a board policy, and the allowable for the sick leave transferred at that time should have only been 16 hours to that date. As our attorney that is handling this, from a local office, not Mr. Martin, that I had the opportunity to speak with the first time, when I spoke to him about this complaint, he said, "Well," he said, "I really can't see where she's discriminated against based on these increases in salary." He says, "And also the preferential treatment that maybe she was given with the sick leave." In her complaint, she originally asked for $350,000, and now she is willing to settle for $27,500. You know what, folks, it's in the best interest of the district to settle and get it off the books. You know, I think they call it "cutting your losses" or something like that, but let me tell you, cutting our losses, that money comes out of district funds, it doesn't come out of an insurance account, but it comes out of district funds. As far as the EEOC complaint against Dr. Rodriguez, that remains to be, you know, that remains to be seen. It's not closed yet, it's got to be mediated, so we don't know what that's going to cost. All in all, our employees have suffered. Some have quit, some were fired, some were demoted, some were forced out, some were forced into early retirement, and the list goes on what they suffered. This was a very stressful period of time for everyone. As a board, we were not able to form a high-performing team because of the lack of trust and the animosity these events created. Dr. Graham is here, hallelujah, and is doing and demonstrating her potential to lead this district, and I say "lead" because she's doing one heck of a job. And everybody knows, if they've got to pick up the phone and say, and has a major decision who they call, they know exactly who to call. You know, for two years, all I heard from principals, from district administrators were, "Who's in charge?" Nobody knew who was in charge, nobody could make a decision. No one knew who was at the helm, and nobody knew who was in charge. But now, Dr. Graham, that you're here, thank goodness, they know. Again, it is truly a disgrace that this board forced this district and community to suffer needlessly for this time period. Once more, we had three opportunities to take action, and we voted not to take action. A board needs to demonstrate trust, respect, and professionalism with each other, and yet during the last two years, on more than one occasion, the above aforementioned qualities were not observed. The public expects and deserves this demeanor out of all of its public officials, and it expects it out of each one of us. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Mr. Scott?
I just want to go back to the workshop this afternoon, and I appreciate everybody who prepared for and presented during that. It was a very good conversation, which I'm not sure where it ultimately led us, except to express some serious concerns, I think all of us feel, about where it currently is headed, and the appreciation to the governor for calling, in essence, a timeout until we figure out what all of the ramifications are. So, I know it is not a dead issue, but it might be a different issue than it started out being, but thanks to everybody who participated in that. And I appreciate Mr. Schaefer bringing up the conversation about dyslexia again, and as I said the last time we talked about it, I'm hopeful that we find a way, whether it's existent or one that we find a way to help create, to test as early as possible whether students are suffering with that, and if so, how we can deal effectively with it, because it was shocking to me when I saw that television show, to see how many people had suffered from that, and in many cases overcome it and become very successful, but it was a long, arduous trip, and if we can make the trip a little shorter and more pleasant for people, I'm happy to do that. Since Mrs. Dozier brought it up, I just want to make a comment about the investigation that was done by the Department of Education on Dr. Burke. It's over, it's done, the decision is made, and we're moving on, and I see no reason to bring it up again. The mistakes were clear, and much more clear in hindsight than they were as things were happening, but I see no benefit to anybody in this district or sitting at this board table to bring it up again, and we should move on and feel confident and very strong about where we're headed and who's here to lead the everyday operation. So, ultimately, things work out for the best in the end, no matter where you might be at any given point in time. So, I'm ready to move on and let the past be the past, and we will all collectively learn from that and move forward. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And I'm going to bring it up just a little bit further, because we do have to decide as a board whether or not we are going to respond to the inspector general regarding that report. We are under no legal obligation to do so, however, we have an opportunity to respond by October 8. So, I believe, Mr. Martin, do you have some input from Mrs. Morgan?
I do. Is she no longer on the phone?
No, I'm still on the phone.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Morgan, I thought you were going to hang up at board comments, I apologize.
No, I'm still going to be able to make breakfast, so I'm hanging on.
Okay, would you like to comment, ma'am?
No, I'm going to ask, because I don't have it, I'm going to ask Mr. Martin to read my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I support a Lee County School District response to the Inspector General draft report regarding allegations of misconduct by former Superintendent Burke. The letter should express our gratitude to the Department of Education for, one, the time and effort expended by IG staff to conduct a difficult investigation requiring lengthy interviews with staff district-wide, and, two, their detailed review of Lee County School District policy and practices integral to the allegations. We should express our commitment to do a careful and thorough review of the report's recommendations. In the process of reviewing district policy and practice, however, we should be cautious about over-prescribing. When an individual or board fails to act or acts inappropriately, a typical knee-jerk reaction is to write new and more onerous rules, thereby limiting discretionary authority to act and tying the hands of responsible and ethical authorities. Those are Ms. Morgan's comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. So, we know that Mrs. Morgan supports a response, thanking the inspector general and agreeing to take a look at our policies. Of course, this was an experience that we all learned from, and we do need to move on, and I think we are, we have taken the first steps towards a forward movement in this district, and hopefully we will be more cohesive as a board and work better together in the future, and I'm grateful for Dr. Graham's leadership and for the staff who has hung in there. Mr. Scott, would you be supportive of a response to the inspector general?
Well, it depends on what the content of that response is. I'm willing to tell them that we have received their report, we are reviewing it, and to the extent that we may need to take action, we will do so at the appropriate time. I don't care to thank them for what they did, that's their job.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And Mrs. Dozier, would you be in favor of a response?
Well, I would, and I would also, they made, in their report, they made some specific recommendations. Now, keep in mind, this is a summary report, it is not the final report, it's the preliminary report. So, when the final report comes out, it's probably going to be a little bit different than what the summary was, the initial draft that came out. I think a matter of thanking them is nothing more than courtesy, showing courtesy that they did in fact investigate, because they investigated because we threw it back to them instead of us doing an investigation ourselves after we had been, after we had been advised by our attorney on more than one occasion to do so. I think that, did I understand in Mrs. Morgan's recommendation that she wanted them to review our policies?
No, ma'am.
No.
Okay, I have not seen this. I could certainly support this, her recommendations, that we get back with them, because basically it's just a response regarding the allegations of misconduct, and gratitude to the department, thanking them for their interviews, and for their suggestions for our policies, their detailed review of our policies, and then I guess the work would really be on us and our discussions with you, which is something that we might want to do, is we might want to have a workshop with you to look at the report...
to look at the report and look at the suggestions that they made as far as policy changes, policy recommendations that they have said.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. And I would support also sending a response. I would request, however, that perhaps Mr. Martin would draft a letter for us, and this is a draft report from the Inspector General, and any final report will be inclusive of our response if we choose to send one, which I think we've decided to do. I would like to ask you to draft a response for us indicating that we will do a policy review, and then maybe you can guide us along in that subsequent to the response, due to the fact that we have a timeline and they need to have the response on October 8.
Yes, ma'am. If I may just be sure I understand, from what you've described, I would assume that the second paragraph of Ms. Morgan's input would form the basis for that response.
Basically, yes. Right.
Basically, that second paragraph, and I'll be happy to draft something to that extent. And certainly, this is a matter that we will want to review in the future. We do need to take a close look at policies. I share a bit of the same concern that Ms. Morgan expressed in terms of ensuring that we review those policies carefully, to not take away too much authority, to be very careful that we're not inhibiting the Superintendent's authority as established by statute. But I'll be happy to draft a letter for that purpose. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think that will be helpful, and you are cognizant of the statutory...
Just one other point, I'm sorry. Certainly, we will want to discuss those potential changes to policy in the future, and I'll be happy to provide input and advice on those. I would suggest to you that that should not be done in isolation, you know, that those individuals, those staff members that are actively involved in performing those investigations and the other policies that are referenced should be a part of that review process.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Okay. I have just a few other comments. I had an opportunity to attend a few of the school Board Advisory Committees, and I want to thank those people from the public who give of their time, and for the staff members who come and assist with that. I think that we have taken on a role where we are working with our Advisory Committees to review their purpose and to give them an opportunity to advise us ongoing in what the needs are as they see them in their different areas. I had a meeting with the School Health Advisory Committee, and they were thankful and grateful that we have implemented the tobacco policy, and they're looking at some more means of enforcement and continuing on to help us to be a smoke-free organization. We had an update on comprehensive health education. There is community support through the Health Department, the Healthy Lee People, and the Lee County Medical Society Alliance has offered to support some of that with some potential funding in the future. The EDEC Committee met the other night, and they welcomed four new members. Dr. Graham visited the meeting and spoke and was well-received. They gave us an update on the Dunbar High renovations, and that is becoming more and more a great source of pride in the Dunbar community. The Curriculum Advisory Committee had elections of officers, and we also reviewed the mission and the purpose and tried to select some future topics for discussion. So, I'm really pleased to have an opportunity to sit with those committees and hear the input from the community members. I attended a family STEM night at Gulf Elementary last Thursday, and as we spoke about the common core and how do we engage and involve parents in the newness of the way we are gonna be teaching our kids and the way they are gonna be learning, it was tremendous. The parents were definitely engaged, asked a lot of questions, tried all of the different science projects and experiments, and I think that that is one way that schools are working to make the parents feel a part of that process and become more closely involved in their The Heights Center invited us to visit them, and Dr. Cheryl Clark and Pete Bohatch were kind enough to participate in that. And what they are looking for is information on our perception of underserved needs in the community, and they have offered to become a resource for us, and they are wanting to enter into a collaborative relationship, and that will be an ongoing conversation. But they have a lot to offer, and it will be another business partnership that will be definitely an advantage for our kids. October is Anti-Bullying Month, and it is a time for our students and staff to showcase those activities that are taking place not only during the month of October, but every day in our schools. And I've been hearing from principals and teachers and kids about what they're doing, and so I think that having that time to bring, again, more attention and awareness and continue the education in helping kids to develop good character and treat each other with kindness and respect is wonderful. I think that's all I have this evening. I want to thank you all for hanging in there and your patience, and I want to thank Mrs. Dozier for her comments and her thorough review of the Investigator General's report. I want to thank you, Mr. Scott, for your report, and I do agree with you that at this time, we will just put the next foot in front of the other and continue to move forward. So, at this time, Mr. Martin, do you have any comments?
Just one thing, again, on the response to the IG draft report. Of course, there will not be time before the 8th of October for me to bring back to you a recommendation for the Board to agree to a particular letter. So, the question is, is the Board comfortable with going forth, giving the Chair the authority to approve that letter?
I am.
I am. Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
She's gone. She went to breakfast.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I'll be comfortable with your letter for sure. Thank you. Dr. Graham, Superintendent's comments?
And one more thing about bully prevention. October 7th has been designated as a day to wear blue in recognition of bully prevention. So, if you wanna mark your calendar, wear blue on October 7th. That's what we're going to be doing here in this building, for the record. College Night was fabulous. We had, Mr. Spiro and I went, we had over 100 colleges there for students to get the opportunity to visit, and it was exciting to see even some middle-school children there, because I think it's never too early to start thinking about what you're gonna do. And there were organizations there, technical schools, Costco was there. But it was a great event, and I wanted to thank Lori Brooks in person. She left, but she and her department pretty much put that together, and they did a fabulous job. I also went to STEM Night at Gulf Elementary School. I finally know what kale actually looks like, and so that was exciting. Had no clue. Mr. Spiro got me to go to that as well, and it was, little kids are just fascinating. They really are. I want to thank the Board for today's workshop. I appreciate your leadership in being willing to take on the more complex issues and the more challenging issues, and I think it was a good start to a conversation that will continue. There are some Boards that would be less than willing to do that, so I greatly appreciate that you were actively involved, and I thank Dr. McCullers and Mrs. Coots and Dr. Craig for putting that information together. We do have a workshop in November on advisories, and at that time, I'm hoping that you all will be able to share with us. I know Mr. Scott has already been pretty clear with the Finance Committee, some actual product or results you would like to see from this year's work of those committees. I think it would be helpful to the members of the committee to know that they're working towards something, and I think it would be helpful to you all to have that input in a little more organized fashion. The policy about the advisory says that the agenda for each of those meetings is to be developed between the Board Liaison and the Chair of the Committee. So, I share that with you. I am happy to arrange for the district liaison to work with the Chair on the agenda, if that's easier for you, just need to let me know how you wanna proceed. But policy says it's the Board Representative and the Chair of the Committee that put the agenda together. Again, I'm offering my services if you want me to take care of that task for you. And finally, I continue to be honored to serve as your Superintendent. This is an exciting, exciting place to be, and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. On October 8, 2013, we'll have a special Board meeting at 2:00 PM, immediately followed by the School Board briefing, and the School Board Action Meeting will take place at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here, and get home safely.